Welcome to the April. Is that better?
Yes.
Welcome to the April 19th voting meeting of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors. I can't do anything about. Do I have to do this, I guess? Can he turn that up? Because I can't sit like this all night.
You're too calm down.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to the April 19th voting meeting of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors. I'm John Fiddler. I'm filling in for Dr. Anne Herring who's on vacation. Won't you join me in reciting the pledge to the flag? Mr. Feig, could you take role, please?
Dr. Anne Herring. John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
Dr. David Hamburger.
Here.
Jason Mill.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Robert Quinter.
Here.
Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the eight board members present this evening, we are also joined at the board table by our solicitor Sharon Montaigne and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Cynthia Merzeski, substitute superintendent, Dr. Eric Flam, director of teaching and learning, Dawn Harris, director of pupil services, Dr. Kristi Howler, director of human resources, and Brian Feig, who serves as business administrator as well as board secretary. Please note that on April 10th, the board met in executive session to discuss a student concern. First item on the agenda is to express the boards and the districts' appreciation to Ross Stores for their donation of $2,500 worth of new books given to the Lorraine Elementary School in the form of a first book marketplace gift certificate as part of their new store grand opening in Exeter. So thank you very much to Ross and happy reading to the kids at Lorraine. We will not have to amend the agenda tonight. And we'll move now to the substitute superintendent's report. We'll go to Dr. Flam, who will recognize our music and art students. Dr. Flam?
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. It's my pleasure to recognize these music students and art students this evening. But really, to do justice, I think it's best for their teachers to do so. So with us this evening is Mrs. Crotty and Mrs. Combs to talk a little bit about their music students. And when they're finished, we'll introduce Ms. Christina Pinkerton. And I did see Mr. White in the audience also this evening. I don't know if he wants to say a few words or not, but nonetheless, we'll recognize our art students when Mrs. Crotty and Mrs. Combs are finished.
Thank you. Hi, I am Melissa Crotty, and we are very excited to have music back and performing in person again. This year, the festivals have been happening. We've been traveling, and we had many students recognized at the senior high level as well as the junior high level and at Reifton as well. This week, we have junior high counties happening, and we have over 45 students who have been recognized with that honor. So PMEA holds these festivals, and students audition first at the county level and are selected just for Berks County. Then they move on into the district level, which is seven counties, including Berks County. Then, from districts, once you get there for that festival, you re-audition, and you go to regionals if you're selected. Regionals for us is pretty much the eastern side of the state. And once you're at the regional level, you have the ability to audition for states, which is usually our highest honor. From states, you have the option or opportunity to go to all eastern or nationals as well on a rotating basis. This year didn't quite happen as normal because we're all recovering from the pandemic. So we wanted to recognize our students who made it this far, have stuck with our music program at Exeter and have continued to excel in our program for the regional level and for the state level. We have Emily Holliday. Emily is one of our orchestral students. She plays the viola. Yeah? And since third grade? Since third grade. So she has been selected multiple years for this honor, and this year she went to regional orchestra. We also have Xavier at hand. I'll take the orchestra and band. Xavier is one of our alto sax players. He has moved into our district. You moved in in ninth grade, 10th grade? In 10th grade, he moved into Exeter. And since then, has been setting us on fire with his ability on the jazz idiom as well as the concert band music. He's been selected for district level, regional level, and this year represented Exeter at the state level. He is also going to be representing Exeter as one of the soloists for the Ringgold Band Concert after receiving a several thousand dollar scholarship. So that is this weekend as well for Xavier. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Combs to talk about our choral students.
So this year, we had five students make PMEA Region Five chorus. And that's the most that I've ever seen make it as I was in this position. So that's very exciting. And so the first one tonight is Ryan Mannett. He's a senior. He's done choir, he's done junior county, county, district, choir, eglers all throughout his high school years and junior high school years. We have Robbie Tuffarello, 11th grader. Rob does band orchestra, choir. He does everything. We keep him very busy. And Jeremy Weaver. Not only did Jeremy make region chorus, but he also made it to state chorus. So he just got back from that. The other two are not feeling well, not able to be here tonight, but that was Tyler Costiano and Becky Terry.
Thank you, Mrs. Crotty and Mrs. Combs, and great job, students. Keep up the terrific work. We're very proud of you.
Ms. Pinkerton? And Mr. White, absent?
I'd like to acknowledge the following top award-winning art students for their many achievements this year being done very, very well. Joanna Nepper is here tonight. She's 15, 16 years at her church tonight. They're all active in other things as well. Morgan Erb, she's currently playing softball for Exeter. So I told her to come if her game is done muddy and all. Brittany Chough. Olivia. Mia Herger. And Bryn. Throughout the year, we started early in shows. Brittany, Bryn, and Olivia were juried into the Scholastic Small Works Competition in Chippensburg. Being juried into a show is an achievement in itself. If you weren't rejected, and that is the word they use, is rejected artwork. So they're learning to overcome rejection if their work doesn't get in. Brittany and Olivia won awards at that show. All the students here won numerous gold and silver awards as well as honorable mentions at the Scholastic Eastern Regional Competition. That's a super prestigious competition. It is nationwide. They're playing with the big boys when they're competing in that competition. That was held at Coestown University. Joanna Nepper is going on for a national ceremony in Carnegie Hall. So I'm so excited for her. And she can win a $10,000 scholarship there, so I'm hoping that she wins that. All the students here were juried into the Yocum Art Institute Show. Joanna, Mia, Brittany, and Olivia all won cash awards. They like cash. The BCIU Show, I just took that down today. That was at the Goggle Works. We won many awards, first places, second places, third places, honorable mentions. Olivia won the Fine Arts Award, which may be cash from the Guild of Craftsman. We didn't get that yet. Also, Olivia McKenna won the Fastlane Award. So their artwork will be put on banners, and that'll hang in West Reading. So usually during the summer, that goes up. And it's pretty cool driving through West Reading, seeing their artwork hanging there. So that's always exciting. We were in the Tri-County Art Show. All their student artwork was down at Montgomery County Community College. And that's nice to also compete outside the county. Brittany won an award at that show. Olivia was a finalist in a national art competition sponsored by the Work in Art Gallery. Olivia is playing. I will be at Penn State Berks this Saturday. Being a dual enrollment student, Olivia had the opportunity to enter her artwork in the Higher Education Conference, which is research and arts social network pieces at Penn State Berks this Saturday. So that's really cool. She is the only student from Racks showing art. So she'll be with Almeria, Albright, and Coestown students showing her artwork there. Olivia McKenna and Morgan submitted artwork to the Racks Art and Literary Magazine. So we're waiting to hear if that's going to be published or not. So that would be really nice, having an actual magazine piece that her artwork is in. Bryn was playing this for the Best of Berks category this year. And then Olivia, Bryn, Brittany, and Emily currently have work in Westchester at Congresswoman Pull and Hands Competition. I just found out before coming here. And Bryn does admit this, she won an award. So tomorrow night, Congresswoman Pull and Hand will be presenting awards in Westchester. That's exciting. They just told us tonight, it was last minute. So we also have Congressman Muster's contest coming up. McKenna, Mia, Morgan, and then a few other students in his district will be competing in that one. And then I have some artwork from the students going to Noldy Arts Competition as well. So we hope for some awards there.
Well, congratulations to all the students. I didn't realize we had that kind of talent here. It's fantastic. And a vote of appreciation to the parents and to the families for supporting your kids. That's wonderful. So again, congratulations. Dr. Flam, thank you very much for that.
And Mr. Fiddler, if I could just add.
Yes, go ahead.
Clearly, their teachers are doing an outstanding job with their students. And the passion and the commitment to the program and to the students is evident always with this group. And I just want to say, thank you.
I'm just curious, would we have seen any of your art at the Exeter Community Library? Or any of you had work on display? Or the Goggle Works? Oh, good, wonderful. Again, congratulations. Now, I know you're all dying to learn more, a live civics lesson, and stay at this meeting until 11, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning. However, we know you have school tomorrow and work to do at home. So if you'd like to leave, we certainly don't want to get in your way. So it's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Flam, it looks like you're up again for a review of the comprehensive plan.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Fiddler. Mr. Martin, will you? Thank you. Right on time. So last we spoke about the comprehensive plan was early fall, when we learned that all districts in the Commonwealth would be granted an extension, time extension. And originally, the plan was due in November. Exeter is a Phase Two school district for comprehensive planning. And Phase One districts received an extension through March. But Phase Two and Phase Three districts received an extension through August 30th. So this plan is due August 30th to the state. And so this evening, what I'd like to do is just to run through very briefly some of the strategies involved in the plan, the three priority areas that we've indicated. And then later this week, we'd like to post the full plan for public review. And then I'll talk a little bit about timeline afterwards. So with regard to our priorities, they remain unchanged from the original plan. There are three. The district will improve the curriculum articulation and the associated instructional practice to ensure that students meet the goal of 100% reading proficiency by grade three. Second, the district will address the need for improved math fact fluency and the need for vertical curricular and instructional alignment in grades K through eight math, so that students will meet our goal of 100% math proficiency by grade seven. Now, those first two priority statements are related to early indicators. In other words, grade three literacy is an indicator of student success throughout their school career. And grade seven mathematics is an indicator of student's success in higher-level mathematics. So I think there are two really important priorities. The third is district will develop pathways to graduation and systems of support that meet individual needs so that students meet our goal of 100% graduation rate, which clearly is important as well. So in terms of the strategies for each of these priorities, with regard to literacy, the first strategy involves training on maximization of a research-based phonics and word study tool for K-2 students as part of the early literacy block in the elementary schedule. The next strategy involves a refresher training on the effective use of research-based intervention tools as tier-three interventions for K-4 students. So for our neediest students, the tier-three intervention piece. The next strategy for the literacy priority is the Balanced Literacy Framework, which involves enhancement of the Balanced Literacy Framework at the K-4 level, including classroom book clubs, interactive read-alouds, phonics and word study, independent readers, and guided shared reading. And then our use of benchmark assessments, consistent implementation of benchmark assessments, and use of assessment results to drive instructional decisions. So those are four of the strategies involved with the literacy priority. With regard to the math priority, the first is K-8 math curriculum alignment, which involves an audit of the K-8 math curriculum for alignment to standards and eligible content. Note where, how frequently, and in what manner students and standards and eligible content are addressed in the K-8 math program and make adjustments as needed. Now, if you may recall, that initially, that math priority involved just grades five through eight. But we expanded that for K through eight because we really feel that there is a need for curricular alignment K through eight and some attention to the program K through eight. So the next strategy with regard to math is adaptive and directive remediation, which involves consistent and regular implementation of adaptive and directed resources to assist with remediation of math skill deficiencies and to supplement the core mathematics program. Next, to improve math fluency and automaticity, which involves consistent implementation of math fluency and automaticity practice to improve accuracy, efficiency, and application of appropriate strategies, as well as increased automaticity of facts. And I want to mention benchmark assessments as a strategy for math as well, which involves consistent implementation of benchmark assessments and use of assessment results, again, to drive instructional decisions. With regard to our graduation goal, the first strategy is to develop a robust career internship program for senior high school credit. And that program has gotten off the ground, and we'd like to continue to support the development of that program. The second strategy is the implementation of an adult-to-student mentoring program to emphasize checking and connecting with students at risk of not graduating, as well as the implementation of a student-to-student transition program that utilizes upperclassmen to serve as role models and ambassadors to welcome freshmen and to provide assistance to facilitate success in ninth grade. So we're trying to make connections between the adults in the building and the students, as well as with many of our great students connecting with their peers. The next strategy is to establish a system that ensures that students who are academically at risk are identified early and are supported by a process that includes interventions based upon student needs. And again, we want to continue to develop that program that has gotten off the ground. The next strategy for the graduation goal is common assessments, revisiting current use of common assessments, revising as needed to provide data regarding student progress and program effectiveness. And this initiative began pre-pandemic, and we'd like to continue efforts to build and utilize common assessments as often as possible. And then the final bullet item for each of the priority areas involves the adoption of a collaborative process for continually analyzing student performance data from a variety of sources, including our own curriculum-based assessments, as well as benchmark diagnostic and standardized assessments to increase the quality, or excuse me, to increase the quantity and variety of data uploaded to the district data warehousing and analytics platform, and to update the assessment calendar with specified testing and data meeting dates prior to the start of each school year. And obviously, that relates to all three of the priorities. So that's just a brief review of the strategies involved with each of those priorities. There are professional development steps, as well as communication steps as well. And this does not include everything that we're doing in the district. These are just things that are related to these three priority statements that we'll be submitting as part of our plan. But there's much more going on in our district beyond what you're seeing in this plan, clearly. A number of those things will be indicated in our professional development plan. So what we're hoping to do is to share our full plan and reports publicly later this week. They will need to be on review for 30 days. And then, looking at the calendar, most likely, what we'd like to do is come back to the board at the June Committee of the Whole meeting with a report on the public review. And then later that month, at the voting meeting, bring the plan to the board for vote so that it's ready to go to the state by August.
Thank you, Dr. Flam. Questions from the board?
I have a question. So it's my understanding that we've made a lot of changes this school year. And if we were looking at the PSSA scores that just came out, the changes that we've made happened after the students took those tests. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So in order to make sure that we're making changes and making progress towards these 100% goals, could you just go over a few of the things, maybe from each category, that are different and new that we implemented this year?
Okay. Well, absolutely. So the Balanced Literacy Framework is new this year. So Mrs. McCray, our literacy implementation specialist, has done a terrific job of getting that off the ground. We provided professional development over the summer for all of our teachers, K-4, K-6 teachers, with regard to the Balanced Literacy Framework. And Mrs. McCray has overseen the implementation of that throughout the school year, checking in the classrooms, checking with teachers, meeting with teachers, and so forth. So that's new in terms of the literacy piece. In terms of the math piece, we're using some adaptive and directive remediation programs now, but inconsistently. So the idea is to use them much more consistently and regularly scheduled so that we can track the progress of our students with those tools, which we haven't been able to do as well this year. In terms of benchmark assessments for math, we'd like to investigate an additional benchmarking piece for math in addition to what we're using now, which is STAR. So we'll be pursuing that. In terms of the high school, all of these things are pretty much new this year, with the exception of common assessments, which were started previously. But the career internship program, the direct intervention programs, and the mentoring programs to come will be new. So there's a lot new this year.
And you mentioned we're going to be looking for public input on the comprehensive plan. What, if the public is out there watching this right now, what type of input would be good for them to give?
Well, certainly, they can provide input on any of these pieces of the plan. If they have questions or concerns about any of them, we'll be happy to entertain them. So they're certainly welcome to review and comment as they wish.
Who would be responsible for identifying that high school student that requires direct intervention?
Great. The high school administration and counselors at this point are doing most of the identification of students. We also have a few other personnel who are involved in that process, including, for example, our social workers and staff personnel and so forth. But primarily, the high school administration and counselors.
Dr. Flam, follow-up question from Mrs. Wilson. You know, with a lot of this being new, how does our, what has been the feedback from our administration and our teachers and our support staff? I mean, obviously, we're going to be waiting to get those assessments to see how we're tracking. But in the meantime, what has that feedback been? Has we done all these changes? Is it positive? Is there things we need to work on? What does that look like?
Yeah, I think, as Dr. Minor presented previously with some data, we've seen some good progress early, and I think we'll continue to see that progress. We'll be happy to report on that as toward the end of the school year. In terms of change. In terms of change, you know, it's always difficult with change, so it, you know, always the first year is a challenge, getting accustomed to a new program, you know, learning a new program. So I think, you know, as the year has gone on, teachers have become more accustomed to and, you know, knowledgeable about the programs, obviously. Sometimes very early on, you don't know the questions to ask, you haven't been working with students long enough. When you have worked with students, you know, your questions change, your thoughts change. So we're going to continue to offer professional development for our teachers in terms of what they feel they need to make the program successful. But Mrs. McCray has been doing that throughout the school year, checking in with teachers, talking with them, offering some support, some lessons along the way. So I think we're progressing, is how I would categorize it.
Thank you.
Dr. Flam, two numbers have stayed in my mind, and I think about these kids a lot. I guess a year, a year ago, year and a half ago, we were talking about the 40% of third graders who couldn't read at grade level, and the more than 50% of seventh graders who couldn't do math at grade level. Those third graders are now in fourth grade, the seventh graders are now in eighth grade. What kinds of monitoring, extra work, extra help, intervention, and so on are we doing so that those two groups of kids who are already behind don't fall farther behind and, in fact, can progress now that they've advanced one year?
So I think the schedule change at the elementary level provided for some RTI time that teachers are using effectively in terms of tier-three, you know, interventions for students. Some of the work that we're doing right now that we've implemented, our strategies related to that. So, you know, we're looking for progress with those intervention strategies. With regard to math, one of the things that we focused on was IXL at the five-through-eighth grade level, which is one of the adaptive and directed remediation strategies, which was used by some, but not all of our teachers, and so we've made an effort to make sure that that's being used consistently. We want to do the same with the intervention tools that are the remediation tools that we have for K-4 in terms of the adaptive and directed pieces. And it's about using those products consistently and regularly so that we can track that progress. We want to make sure that our students have the fundamental skills that they need, as well as the conceptual understanding of mathematics as they move forward. If we can do that, if we can make sure that we're sending students forward with the fundamental skills that they need, if we can make sure that our curriculum is aligned to the standards and the eligible content, and if we can use our adaptive and directive remediation strategies effectively, I think we're going to see progress in those areas.
Great, thank you. Other questions from the board?
Can I just make a couple very, very logistical comments? When the whole plan is going to be viewed by public, there's, this is a document that we had to use, that Dr. Flam had to use, a PDE, kind of fill in the template, and so it's not customizable, I guess is the best way to say it. So there's a couple of things that might be out of order. You might see some things that look out of order. We tried to get them changed, and we just could not, correct, Dr. Flam?
Actually, I did go through and make those revisions, so it should be pretty much in order now.
All right.
I pretty much had to extract everything and put it back in, in the order, because as you're doing the plan using the template, if you insert some information one piece at a time, if you don't do it in the exact order that you want, it appears out of order, and there's no way to change it. So I extracted everything and put it back in, in the order.
So now we know what you did with your spring break. Okay. And just so no one thinks it's an oversight, you might see under the committee membership list listed, you might see some administrators and board members that are no longer administrators and board members, and we intentionally left those folks on there because they were part of the comprehensive planning committee since, at the beginning. So it was not an oversight that we didn't renew those. So just wanted to, a couple logistic things. Thank you, Dr. Flam.
Thank you very much, Dr. Flam. We will now move to the public comment section relating to tonight's agenda, in which we will be following Board Policy 903 regarding public participation in board meetings. We do not have a name, any names, on this section, but if there's someone in the audience who would like to say something about an agenda item, please step forward and state your name and address. Hearing none, we will move on to the approval of minutes. If there is no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's school board meetings, the March 1 Committee of the Whole meeting, the March 15 Board voting meeting, and the March 29 Special Voting Meeting. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve the March 2022 Treasurers Report and Payment Request dated March 16th to April 19th. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the Treasurers Report is approved. We will now move to the Education Committee, which I chair, and I'm very happy to introduce Dr. Andrea Battler, who has, she's the other member of that committee, and she has agreed to handle that for us tonight. Dr. Battler?
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. As you can see, under A is the enrollment report, enrollment report, excuse me, and B are the field trips within the 60-mile radius. We don't have to vote on that, so we will be starting with Item C, the school calendar. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the revised 2022-2023 school calendar, the first day remaining as August 29th, but the changes, spring break, April 5th through the 10th, April 3rd and 4th are now instructional days, May 26 is a student half day, and an afternoon teacher in-service, the last day in graduation, June 8, and snow days, April 5th, 6th, 10th, and June 9th, in additional days as needed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this matter?
I just have a quick question. How do we determine the order in which we do snow days? So why did we choose to do April 5th as the first snow day? Why didn't we choose to do June 9th as the first snow day?
It's the way we always did it, but simply, I mean, it's traditionally the way it's been done, but we could switch it if we wanted to. I mean, that's not a problem. That's not a problem to switch it.
And that would have to be voted, or is that?
That's a good question.
No, I don't believe it has to be voted. I mean, you're voting on this, these dates, you know, procedurally, how they're chosen is really an administrative function.
Thank you.
I believe also, I'm sorry, I believe also then the use of, when flexible instructional days would be used, it would also be administratively then, could be determined.
Further discussion?
I just want to mention, too, if a family already had plans to go away over that week, they could always do an educational trip form right around Easter. Okay, thanks.
Any further comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I didn't see the no, so who, could you just raise your hand if you said? Oh, you're on top of it, Brian, thank you. All right. Any abstentions? Brian, you want to give us a tally?
Motion passes.
Sorry, motion passes six to.
Okay, thanks. Dr. Battler?
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. Item D, we'll take these one by one. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves an agreement between Kids Piece National Centers Incorporated and the Exeter Township School District for private academic programming for a student beginning February 4, 2022, through the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year at a cost of $170 per day, approximately $14,450.
We have a motion and a second discussion, please.
Dr. Battler, I just have a question. So this was added to the agenda, this was not discussed at the COW meeting?
Yes, you're correct. And the reason for that, I will turn it over to Dawn, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Battler. You will see, I think that question came up previously, and I don't think I got the chance to comment, so I'm glad that you asked that question again. Probably more so in the departments that I oversee than others, you will on occasion see things that will come through in between those two meetings, in between the Committee of the Whole and the voting meeting, and most of those contracts are related to out-of-district placements. So we're dependent upon when we receive from that provider's billing department and contracts department when they actually send it to us. Oftentimes, too, we'll have kiddos go into placement in between those two meetings, and then we might get the contract and stick it on the voting meeting.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I actually had a question as well, Dawn, that I just thought of. Because these are, I guess, kind of prorated, so to speak, because it started back in February, do they contact us to make sure that we are going to pay for that ahead of time, or, oh, it does?
Yeah, that's, there's a whole process that takes place when we do an out-of-district placement. Now, particularly with Kids Piece, those out-of-district placements often are the result of a student being within their hospitalization unit first and then stepping down into their school-based program for further care, which is the part that we fund. And our team, and various members of the team, whether it be a special ed supervisor, whether it be our social worker, our SAP coordinator, so on and so forth, are involved in that transition and involved in that placement. So they're authorized to give that approval from us, they get the approval from me in order to place the student and bill.
And then, I guess, so my follow-up question would be, why don't we vote on it then?
Vote on a student?
Like, why don't we, yeah, like, why don't we vote on it when they've been placed, like, that month, versus when we get the bill?
Because it's not, this isn't the bill, this is the actual contract.
Just the contract, okay.
Yeah, so you're, you're, yeah, you're voting on the contract.
Thank you. Yep, that's okay.
Further discussion?
This isn't really a discussion about this, but I just would like to bring up the whole idea of if we don't discuss it at a COW meeting, is it breaking the Sunshine Act that we didn't discuss it before? So could we get a ruling on that?
I don't know that I'm authorized to give a ruling, but what I can tell you, what I can tell you is, so long as it's published in the published agenda that comes out two days before the board meeting, you don't need to go through the process of amending your agenda. The fact that it didn't get covered in a COW meeting doesn't prohibit it from being on this agenda.
Right. The public's, we've advertised, the public's been given an opportunity to comment on it, just like anything else.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not in favor? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, letter E. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves an agreement between Kids Piece National Centers Incorporated and the Exeter Township School District for private academic programming for a student beginning December 14, 2021, through the remainder of this school year at a cost of $170 per day, approximately $20,060.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, on to letter F, Pediatric Therapeutic Services. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the continuation of the contract for services agreements between Pediatric Therapeutic Services Incorporated and Exeter Township School District for compensation reimbursement for services from July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I wonder if we could get a quick overview of what the program is and how we utilize it here in the district, because I just see on here that, I believe we also have speech therapists and school psychologists on staff at the district, so just to limit my confusion.
Yes, you do. So these are agency services, and they supplement what we have within the bargaining unit. So we have some speech therapists that are part of the bargaining unit, but then you have additional speech needs, and that's what this contract is for. And that's out of PTS, although we have that array of services that we have used in the past, right now, we're only using them for speech therapy.
Okay. And do we know how often we use them, or?
Every day, all the time.
Okay.
Yep, all the time.
Further discussion?
I just have a question on the term, so this is for a three-year term. The existing agreement that we have with them, is that similar, a three-year term?
Yep. And that's, again, agency-dependent, so I'm trying to think of another agency. Ostles is one that does three-year terms. Some of them prefer to only do annual contracts. PTS is one that does a three-year.
Three-year, okay.
Thank you.
And again, it's just an agreement that this is what we will pay if we need their services, so we're not utilizing all of those services from them all at the same time. Like I said, right now, we're just using their speech therapy services.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have an open speech therapist position? I'm just curious, at the hourly rate that this is, is this, is it, is this a good service for us to have? Should we be looking at bringing on another speech therapist if we're using them daily?
The board is always welcome to discuss positions being added to the bargaining unit, Mr. Morgan. I'm not sure if that's your question or not.
I guess my question is that we're saying that we're using these daily, so we're using speech therapists daily.
Yes, yes.
Seventy-two dollars an hour.
They help us cover a couple of the buildings.
I would imagine that if we're using them on a daily basis, that it is costing us more as a district to hire this service for speech therapy than it would to have a full-time employee, is that correct?
If the board would like us to present you with some numbers on that weekend.
I would appreciate that, I think that would be great. Thank you.
I think it would be definitely worthwhile, and obviously, these services, these contracted employees that come in, we are not paying them any benefits or anything like that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Harris, is that something you could have for the next Committee of the Whole meeting?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
I just had a question. Mrs. Harris, I thought at our last Committee of the Whole meeting, I thought we had an item for Ostles as well. Is that on the agenda? Didn't we talk about Ostles?
That'll be part of the consent agenda.
Yeah.
That was already part of the consent agenda?
For tonight.
It's coming up.
Oh, is it coming up?
I'm sorry.
Ah, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see. Oh, I see what you mean, okay. It's within that, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on PTS? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
On to letter G, Education Committee Consent Agendas. So we will be looking first at Items 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7, so I'm going to take out 3 as a separate vote. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following education committee items. Number 1, the following field trips. I just want to mention that the senior high 12th grade students traveling to Hershey Park has been added since our Committee of the Whole meeting. 2, it authorizes the Director of Teaching and Learning to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education the following grants. A service agreement between Education Bill-Based Services and the Exeter Township School District for a registered behavior technician, services at a rate of 41.65 per hour. for Registered Behavior Technician Services at a rate of 41.65 per hour for 35 hours per week for the remainder of the school year. The continuation of a contract for services agreement between Ostles Rehabilitation Services and the School District for Compensation Reimbursement for Services from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. In agreement with RAC to continue to offer dual enrollments to the students of Exeter Township High School for the 2022-2023 school year. The tuition rate is $99 per credit, the same rate as last year, and the student is responsible. And the following list of staff conferences, one through eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes.
And back to number three, then. Teachers in the Parks Contract for the Fully Inclusive TIPS Programming Option at a Flat-Rate Fee of $8,000 and a Per Student Cost of $300 for approximately 150 students. And Dr. Minor, did you have any, or, oh, God, Dr. Murchesky, sorry, Dr. Murchesky.
It's your side.
Yeah, it is.
I think we need a second first.
Oh, yeah, we do need a person.
Second.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I had heard that you had something to add, Dr. Murchesky.
Sure, so the contract is for a district commitment of 150, which at this point in time means that we would be committed to pay fully for the 150, to pay the TIPS program for the 150. Last time we talked at the Committee of the Whole, that was going to be our limit. Since then, we received word from the state that we have some, what do we call them? Leftover funds from ESER, or?
No, it's actually state ESER that they gave this whole, to the district.
Right, so it's state money.
Certain amount for, that has to be geared towards either summer or personal development, professional development for teachers.
So the state had a pot of ESER money, and they rationed it off to the school districts, and so we got it word last week, maybe, or week before?
Well, actually, in the application, it's still soon, it's being reviewed, but the state sent us the money.
But we got the money, we started getting the money, all right.
I called the state and said, when do you approve it? They're behind on their paperwork.
They're behind on that, but we have the money. So we've been able to say that, that in addition to the dollars that we had had previously allotted, we would be able to fund up to 300 students. 100 of those 300 students being our neediest students free of charge, and then 200 students at the $95, $100 rate, whatever that is. And then that would, that would cover all of, all of the funds that we have allotted up to that point in time. The contract, the commitment can stay the same at 150, and then that's what our commitment is to, but I talked to Matt Hathaway, who was here last time, and he, and the district can work together to take that up to 300. They're willing to, you know, do the hiring as the registrations are coming in and working through those pieces with us, and then us making payments as necessary to help them with the payroll as that comes along. So we have that worked out. So the contract does not have to change. The additional discussion that I would like to hear from the board is if the board would be willing to support the funds being spent up to 300. Now Sharon, my understanding is, we don't have to vote on that since the money's not being spent right now, but I would like to hear from the board so we know whether to accept 150 registrations or, you know, take it up to the 300, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So.
Does anybody object to that? Let's start with objections.
So I have a couple of comments. So the first thing is, just for clarity, I believe it's, I believe from my understanding from the last, from the committee is that it's $300 per student, so for those, if we went with the 300, those additional 200 students, we would still pay the 300 upfront, and TIPS would credit us $100 per student.
Actually, we only have to pay half of that upfront. We only have to, for the commitment piece, actually, what we only have to pay upfront is half of the cost of the 150 students. That's what we have to pay upfront. And then, as we get more registrants, then we would pay half of that until, and then at the end, we would pay the balance.
So, according, so I, first of all, to start off, I'm fully supportive of doing the 300 students. I think that, given where we are at, that we're still recovering from the pandemic, that this is a good, a good use and a great program, and we're lucky to have it here in Exeter. I think it's great, and what they've done. If I did my math correctly, that leaves us where we were a lot, two weeks ago, which is with a total cost to the district of $43,000. And I just want to know where those funds are coming from, if they're coming from ESER or if they're coming from the general fund, if we've made a final decision about that.
The $43,000 is out of the general fund.
So I guess my, my follow-up to that is, is that I don't know that I'm supportive of taking it out of the general fund, especially given that we have a $2 million deficit right now. However, in looking at the report from ESER's, it looks like we have earmarked $918,205 for 2023, 2024, and my suggestion would be that we use $43,000 of that money from '23, '24 towards this program.
So, and I did talk to Mr. Feig about this today, about the difference between using the fund balance and the ESER. So the ESER money that we're using now is ESER III money. And there are, and that's from, that's our money from Federals, and there's more stipulations around that. As far, even more stipulations than around ESER I and ESER II, as far as our reporting. So one of the, well, two of the stipulations are, one, that there's some kind of metrics around the, how the money is spent, that can show an impact on learning. And two, that it hits within our, a cross-section of our demographics. So just today, as we were investigating this, and I was finding out this information, I did talk to TIPS, I talked to Matt Hathaway at TIPS, and we could put a metric in, we believe, and I talked to Dr. Flam, too, we believe probably, maybe using the STAR assessment, we would be able to do that. We would also then have to ensure, though, that we're meeting some of the demographics that are within the ESER pieces. So I guess we're not 100% sure we can say, yes, ESER III funds can be used, we just started looking at those stipulations today.
But if it can be, we can absolutely use it for that, correct?
It's, in there it says evidence-based summer learning or summer enrichment programs.
So is, our interpretation, yes, yes.
We'd have to redo our application to make sure they approved it, or evidence-based, and evidence-based is basically test before, test after, you know, that you're, you're looking to improve something.
So if, we need to, like Brian said, we need to do a little bit more verification that we can indeed use it, but if we can, we can. I mean, if we're allowed to, we can.
I'm supportive of the program regardless, but if we're able to use federal money, I would, that's designed for this, I'd much rather us use that.
I would, I would suggest, however, that if you're, if you're not sure that you can control those functions that you do have to meet, that if you're going to approve this, you approve it on the assumption that you'll use the general fund money. If you can qualify for the ESER's money, that's great, but I wouldn't plan on it.
Yep, and I'm supportive of that. Thank you.
Other thoughts on the addition?
So for, I'm very supportive of TIPS as well, but I was a little bit confused. So the ESER money that just came, that has to be, or that we just, yeah, that just came, that one is ESER III that has more stipulations, is that what you said?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
So there's two pots.
Right.
Well, there's more than two pots, there's a lot of pots, but these two pots that we're using.
Right.
One that we just got, that's the, I'm calling it leftover state money, it's the money that the state has that they're dispensing. That has less stipulation than the other pot, which is ESER III money, which does have more stipulations.
Okay.
So we're using the state ESER money, for sure.
Right.
It's this ESER III that we're.
And so what Tim said, or what Mr. Morgan said with the 30, or the?
It's 43.
43, that's leftover, in case we can't use the second pot, is the general fund.
Right.
That's it, okay.
That's exactly.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
And of that, just to clarify, too, I believe if it would have to be general fund money, I believe it's 23 from this year's and 20 from next year's general fund, something.
Correct.
It's 23,000 from this year's general fund, and then 20,000 from next year's general fund.
And, and TIPS goes, starts in June, so you'd be paying two, in the two different years.
And we're only, and my understanding is, we're only committed to the $8,000, the rest of it is a per student cost, so we're saying up to 300. If we only get 150 students that are enrolled in it, we would only pay that 150. We wouldn't be obligated to pay the 300.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, don't change, we're not going to change the contract because it says 150 on there. If we only get 100, we're still committed to 150, though. But I feel that that's a safe bet.
Great.
Other thoughts from board members?
Mr. Fidler, I was just going to add that I will be abstaining from this vote because my spouse sits on the Board of Directors for the Teachers in the Parks Organization.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Is there anyone, anyone from the board who objects to this?
Can you clarify, you're talking about the additional 150?
I'm sorry, the additional 150. Hearing none, I will assume that that's the sense of the board. Any other general discussion about the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Mr. Mel abstains. The motion passes. And Mrs., Dr. Battler, I believe that concludes your report. Is that correct? Thank you. We'll now move to the Personnel Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. So we are going to be, we're going to pull out number two from our consent agenda, so we are going to be voting on, is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number one, resignations. Number three, appointments. Number four, change of status. Number five, leaves of absence. And number six, the attached list of course requests.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Mr. Morgan?
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number two, retirements, and under number two subsection, support staff, there are three employees that we have up for retirement. Mrs. Bastian, Mrs. Itaro, and Mrs. Vensilis. Vensilis, hopefully I got those names correct.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to take the opportunity, as the board always tries to do, to say thank you to these three people for their dedication to our district and everything that they've done. Looks like combined, we have 23, 43, is that 51, 55 years of service to the district, so I think that that's fantastic, and we really appreciate you and wish you the best on your retirement.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. And is that your report, Mr. Morgan?
That's it, thank you.
Finance, Facilities, and Audit, Mr. Mel.
Yes, item A, it is recommended that the Board of Directors accepts the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 audit report as prepared by Malley LLP and authorizes distribution of the report.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
I think we need to move back to the agenda. Did we miss?
Oh, yes, we.
We just did the consent agenda, but I think we need to go back now.
Okay.
That was my fault, my apologies.
That's okay.
Think the, were these, these are added on after the committee of the whole, is that what this, okay, that's why this is, this is kind of new.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. We're good. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Subject B, resignations. C, terminations. D, appointments. E, changes of status. F, leaves of absence.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, and thank you, Mrs. Wilson. We can tell you used to sit up here.
Okay, and jumping in, back into my committee, item B, contract with Robert Half Agency. I, you may remember back in the March 15th voting meeting, we had a, an agreement with Account TIPS that was presented to us. The board had, there was a lot of discussion about it, and I think there was probably some confusion on what was actually voted on. I just want to clarify that the vote on the March 15th meeting was just to agree to the relationship or the agreement with Account TIPS. We did not formally vote to set a maximum hourly rate, although it was discussed at that meeting that it was going to be $60. Just want to clarify that. Mr. Feig, is there, this is obviously for the same position that we were, okay, so Account TIPS is the same as Robert Half? Okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying. So, yeah, that's, that's it, so we're going to be approving an hourly rate of 49.75 for an employee. And is this, as far as the term, this is just going to the end of the school year, or is this?
It's, it's filling in for a position that's going on leave that will not be back till February next year.
Till February of next year, okay.
Which will be leaving sometime in May. And it is a critical position in the finance office.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Moving on to item C, the consent agenda is recommended that the Board, the School Directors approves the following Finance, Facilities, and Audit Items. We will be approving items one for the BCTC 2022-23 school year budget. Item two for the Real Estate Tax Collector Audit Report for the 20, year ending 2020, and number three, budget transfers.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Mr. Fidler, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Next, we have the Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Mr. Fidler. We have two policies on the agenda for approval this evening. These are second readings, so they've been reviewed previously by the board. One is threat assessment, the other is emergency preparedness and response. So it's recommended the Board of Directors approve these two policies for second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Moving on to individual committee reports, uh, Mrs. Wilson, athletics and extracurricular activities.
Thank you. Um, I just would like to start my report with, um, coming from the music department. Um, next week, um, kind of kicks off the spring with the string jam, which includes all, um, string instruments, elementary through high school level at the high school gymnasium at seven PM next Wednesday. Um, and also then check the school calendars and, um, it's parent square for, um, individual school, um, concerts and art shows coming up this spring. Um, for athlet- for the athletic update, um, I just have a, a couple things to add to the winter sports update, um, that we were kind of waiting on as, after last month. Um, the, in the indoor track, um, the, there was a girls' distance medley and they competed in the fifth, uh, state championship and they came in fifth. And that was Maddie Holbrook, Helene Shavik, Gabrielle, um, Keith, and Kira Mar. And also, um, the girls' swimming and diving, they took seventh in states. And this year they broke six school records. And the boys' swimming and diving team, um, broke three school records this season. And also, um, Mr. Legath put a, um, very large document together to give to Mrs. Breton to share with all of the, um, the winter sports updates for individuals and for the team. So hopefully Mrs. Breton will kind of share that, uh, with us soon. Um, right now, the spring season is already at its midpoint, which include, includes high school boys volleyball, um, high school boys, boys tennis, and high school boys lacrosse. And then it includes high school and junior high, boys and girls track, um, high school and junior high baseball, high school and junior high softball, and high school and junior high girls lacrosse. Um, Mr. Legath wanted to mention, thanks, um, especially to the grounds crew for doing a great job, um, after all that rain last night. Uh, both our softball and baseball, uh, fields were ready for play this afternoon. So, um, thank you to the grounds crew for that. And, um, you know, Mr. Legath took over the grounds crew about a year ago, um, doing that, and that seems to worked out, have worked out really well. So thank you to him as well. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Next we will have, uh, Dr. Battler, the Ed- the Exeter Community Education Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Um, ECEF welcomed attorney Kelly Klein Carr as their newest board member at their April meeting, taking ECEF's board members to twenty-four members. They also welcomed me to their board meeting and they're looking forward to working with both of us, which is fantastic. Um, this is the best thing, so everybody listen. ECEF's food truck festival will take place May twentieth from four to eight PM outside of Don Thomas Stadium in the parking lot. Mark your calendars, everybody. They also are looking for some stands if anybody wants to set up a stand during that time as well. So they were on a roll. Also, they're in full planning for their annual golf tournament, August fifth at Reading Country Club. The ETSD staff received notification that the annual teacher mini grant application period is now open until May sixth. Staff in the district may apply for up to five hundred dollars in mini grants for their classroom, subject, or building. Winners will be notified June second with formal announcements made at the August staff welcome back day. Typically, mini grants totaling, excuse me, nearly three thousand dollars, sometimes more depending on the year and amount of requests we receive, are awarded to ETSD staff. It's not uncommon for ECEF to align outside donors to staff mini grant requests, like Robin Schaefer's special needs recycling project and five hundred dollars toward the senior high stage piano. We encourage staff to reach out, big or small. We love to rally behind the staff's projects. And finally, um, ECEF would like to recognize freshman Richter Bogus for his forward-thinking idea to do his Eagle Scout project in support of the Exeter Township School District students. Coping kits, as Richter had named the project, is in support of providing our students with small coping items. Collection boxes are located at a dozen area businesses, and ECEF has lent use of our Amazon wishlist. The project has been a success and we're looking forward to assembling the kits mid-May with delivery to the Exeter Township School District School Councilor shortly after this date and before the end of the school year. Items in the kits include fidgets, coloring books, journals, candy, motivational notes, pens and pencils, a nominal Starbucks gift card, et cetera. These kits are designed for the student to keep them at home. ECEF is proud of Richter who presented it our board at the beginning of, who presented to our board at the beginning of April. If you'd like to support the project, please check our social media pages for more information or for the link to the Amazon wishlist. And it really was fabulous what he presented. So if you have a chance to go on the Amazon wishlist or their Facebook page, I would really encourage you to do so. That's everything.
Thank you, Dr. Battler. Uh, Brooks Crew and Technology Center, uh, I'm one, I'm the JOC representative. Nothing to report beyond the report that you've already received. And the next meeting of the JOC will be, uh, Wednesday of next week. Brooks County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Mr. Fidler. Um, the BCIU board will have its, uh, fiftieth anniversary recognition this, uh, Thursday. And this will be a press event and should start at five, five PM, uh, just before the April board, uh, committee, the whole meeting and then, uh, board meeting. Uh, so that's, um, something really pretty significant to consider, the fact that BCIU has been in, in, um, uh, in operation since nineteen seventy-one. And I would imagine there'll be a lot of, uh, former, um, uh, administrators, executive directors, and probably some former board members. Mr. Quinter, I know you were the Vice President, um, of BCIU, um, Board of Directors for many years, so, uh, not sure whether you received an invitation, but you certainly would deserve.
I, I, patient, but my father was also on the board. And I presented a copy of one of the early budgets to, uh, Carl when he was there. And I believe it was something like twenty-two thousand dollars, which, uh, would just about pay for the, uh, bus licenses now, I guess.
Um, so, um, that's all for my, uh, BCIU report, Mr. Fidler.
And would you like to continue with, uh, any legislative news?
Sure. Uh, one item was, and I think I sent this information around the board members, the Committee of, uh, Committee on Legislative Action, the COLA meeting. Uh, this is a meeting that happens four times each year. Uh, normally it's in person. It's been virtual for the past couple of years. This year it was virtual, uh, all year and, and this past week it was no different. Uh, Dr. Terry Madonna, who used to be from F and M College, now from Millersville University, um, very extensive, you know, knowledge and, uh, well-versed in terms of all things political, particularly in Pennsylvania. And, uh, Dr. Madonna spoke on, um, you know, the, the many topics, including the presidential approval rating, voter demographics in, in Pennsylvania, um, uh, some of the issues impacting voter decisions that we can expect in this year's, uh, elections. A couple of important races that have national prominence, the governor's race, obviously, and then US Senate race, uh, which are, are have been, been, um, very heavily covered in the media. Uh, also, there are fifty-six General Assembly, um, nominations, um, and, um, and of course, the Pennsylvania Senate races as well. So, uh, very informative. I would suggest if anybody has any interest in these, um, meetings, as I said, they're, they're quarterly. Uh, usually business managers, superintendents, board members are in attendance. Uh, and if you have any interest in these, just let me know and I'll see that you get an invitation to participate. Uh, the last thing I have on, in terms of, of, uh, the legislative element is the Spring Advocacy Day. Uh, it's coming up on the twenty-fifth. Um, this is, this year it will be at the Capitol. Um, and this is a really pretty neat event where, uh, uh, school board members from all over the state gather in Harrisburg. Um, this is an, an event sponsored by PSBA and the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators. So it brings all these folks, you know, together. Um, and the big issues this year are really the impact of state funding on our district, uh, including the basic and, and special education funding that we receive. And then, uh, also the critical services that we anticipate and need to continue to get, uh, regard, uh, as a result of the pandemic. Um, the other topic that's really going to be, uh, important to kind of review with our legislators, again, and we've been doing this every year that I can remember, is talking about charter school funding reform. Um, and trying to get the legislature to agree to a funding formula that would actually recognize the actual cost of educating students in regular and special ed, in, uh, charter and cyber charter programs. So this is a day that starts off, uh, generally early in the morning. At, at this year, it's going to start off in the State Museum in Pennsylvania. Uh, there'll be a logistics kind of meeting. Then everybody walks across over to the Capitol and then you actually vote, you actually walk to your, um, to meetings with your legislators. So typically you're assigned certain times where you would go into the office of your legislator and meet, and that's throughout the morning. Then around noon time, there's a, um, there's a, a press conference on the steps of the rotunda in the Capitol. And, uh, lunch, complimentary lunch is provided for the participants. So this is a really great event. Uh, we haven't had a whole lot of participation here from, from our, our board in the past, but there's no reason why anybody can't go. Uh, coming up on the twenty-fifth, if you still want to go, let me know and I'll help you get through the registration process. But it's really a lot, it's eye-opening. It's really interesting to s- to see, to walk through the Capitol, to actually see the office of your legislator. Um, some are big elaborate offices, some are little holes in the wall, and you can tell where they stand in the, in the hierarchy based upon the, the accommodations that they've been provided. Um, and it's, and it's really, uh, I think does a great service for education to make sure that our legislators are aware of what the ba- main issues are in public education today. So, um, that's coming up this, on the twenty-fifth. And, uh, that's all for my report, Mr. Fidler.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Um, Township and Borough Liaison, Mr. Mel?
Yes, uh, nothing significant to report from any of the Township or Borough meetings. Um, it, one thing I did want to call out was on Friday, April eighth, um, there, there was a notice that went out about, um, rabid animals identified near Exeter schools. Um, the St. Lawrence Borough officials, along with the Animal Rescue League of Brooks County, identified a number of rabid animals along, uh, Jacksonwald Avenue and the bottom of Parkview Road near Intedum Creek. Um, I, I, has the administration heard any updates from the ARL or St. Lawrence Borough?
No, that they, all I know is they keep on trapping, uh, immunizing and, uh, fixing the strays they catch. Um...
Yeah.
They also had, I think, two so far, rabies clinics where people don't have their pets immunized, so they're, they're still running that too.
Okay.
But I, I think they had three positive animals. That's about it.
Do you, do you know if, were those all cats?
I, I believe so, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
That's, yeah, that's what I've been hearing is it's mainly been cats.
But they think it transferred from raccoons.
Okay.
You know, they, they have several borough, borough colonies in, uh, the borough.
Okay. So, um, uh, uh, I would just remind the public to obviously be cautious. If you notice anything, uh, be sure to contact, um, authorities or the Animal Rescue League. Um, if you do see any animals acting suspiciously or foaming at the mouth or whatever would, would be happening there. Thank you.
I guess we could call Atticus Finch to see if he could, uh, take care of the, uh, rabid animal. All right, thank you, Mr. Mel. Um, next will be the public comment section for general comments, and we have a gentleman named Mike Chapina who has signed up to VR Comment, Commenter Mike.
Mr., Mr. Chapina, sorry, is your microphone on? I'm not...
How about now?
I think I hear it now. I just want to make sure it's coming over the...
Mike Chapina, one hundred East Thirty-Sixth Street. Um, Mr. Mel, first of all, I want to wish you, uh, congratulations on your birthday. Um, I remember back in the day when you had Airlight Xavier here, um, this evening, so, um...
Wait, wait, say that, I am sorry, I missed it.
Xavier, the Alto Sax player that was here earlier.
Oh, yes.
I remember back in the day when you had Airlight.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes. I, I wish I had, I had that head of hair, uh, these days. I, I wish I had any hair.
Appreciate you, uh, sharing, uh, your day, your day with us. Uh, just a couple of comments. Um, can we get a list or, or, Dr. Klein, can I get a list of the winners of all the people that were honored tonight? I don't know if that's been posted somewhere, but, um, somebody can send that out. Um, I had a question regarding the graduation rate. I know that you said it, we were, uh, the district was shooting to have a hundred percent graduation rate. Do we know where that rate is now and has it, um, changed, improved, gone down in the last, uh, couple of years? I don't know if we, if you guys have any of that info now?
I don't have exact numbers now.
Okay, okay. Um, one of the other things that you mentioned, um, was, uh, identifying students before, before they drop down. How early in the process do you, do you identify them? I mean, you, they don't always drop out as seniors, right? And they can drop out. Go ahead. All right, thank you. And the, and the comprehensive plan, I appreciate the explanation on that. What is the length of the comprehensive plan? Is there a period of time that it covers? Three years. Okay. I know somebody had a question about kindergarten orientation. I don't know if there's any update on kindergarten orientation. Um, that was just something that was thrown out there? No? Okay. Well, people want to know, so, anyway. Um, and can somebody explain to me, um, just in plain language, what exactly we did on tips tonight? Just very clearly. I keep saying we...
I can, I, I can, yeah. Sure, if you, um, so what we, what we did was we approved a contract, we didn't, the board did, um, approved a contract that, um, the district committed to a hundred and, to funding a hundred and fifty students, or committed to paying tips for a hundred and fifty students. Um, what the change was tonight from the Committee of the Whole was that because we have additional funds coming from ESER, um, the board had given kind of, um, a consensus that they would support taking that number up to three hundred students. So we have a contractual commitment to a hundred and fifty students, um, but we're looking to be able to register up to three hundred students. Of that, because of the way of our, our funds, um, are designed, one hundred of those students would be, um, one hundred of those slots would be free for our students of highest need. The other two hundred slots would be o- open for registrations for, um, I believe the rate's ninety-five dollars or something like that. So that's how it would be the breakdown. The question that was coming up, um, just to clarify that, is where the funds are coming from. So most of the funds are coming from, uh, there are actually three pots. There's a state ESER pot, there's an ESER III pot, and there's the fund balance pot. So the question was, the ESER III is thirty-five thousand. The other forty-three thousand, is that coming from ESER III or is that coming from fund balance? And that has to be determined based upon the eligibility of the tips program for the ESER III. Did that clarify?
Can I, can I just make the correction? It's general fund, not fund balance.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So there was another question on the calendar. March twentieth was also added to the calendar, which is in blue. November eighth is in blue too and says no students, but March twentieth says early dismissal. Is March twentieth no students or early dismissal?
Looking at it, it looks like it's just no students. It doesn't, I don't see early dismissal. It's on the what? Oh, on the second sheet.
It might be on the detailed written sheet that we have to get rid of it. No students.
No students. No students.
Please, Marie, if you're listening, it's no students. Um, and, and then finally, uh, Mrs. Wilson mentioned, uh, the spring sports. And, and I do want to say, if anybody's had the opportunity to tune in...
Thank you, Mr. Chapina. Uh, there are no other names on the list. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to be heard on any item? Right? Are there any, uh, board members who would like to be heard at this time?
Mr. Fidler, I'd just like to, um, just say a few things, um, about my recent, uh, opportunity to, to tour some of the buildings. Um, we were given an opportunity to, uh, to have a facilities tour, uh, to look at the operations of the building, not necessarily classrooms, but, you know, some of the mechanical operations of, of the, of the, um, of the district. So, Mr. Fike, uh, our business administrator, and Steve Biggerstaff, who was our Director of Operations, took me personally around the four of our buildings and spent a considerable, considerable amount of time with me to help explain, um, you know, what some of the priorities were for the buildings. And I have to say, I was, I was very impressed, um, especially with Steve, um, in his knowledge, because he's only been with us for about six months, I believe. And he's very quickly, I think, um, really developed a, a real solid understanding of, of where, where things currently stand and where things need to go. And he, I think he has a plan and a vision for, um, many of the aspects of the facilities that have been maybe somewhat neglected for some years. Uh, and he's, and he's really taken some action. And I've seen, and, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing the improvement that he's projecting, uh, any, in the next visits we have. Um, but also, thank you, uh, Mr. Fike, for setting this, this up. Um, you know, for, I, I can tell we're in good hands with our, um, Director of Operations. Things are running well. Our buildings look great. Um, and, uh, I think we're, we're, um, you know, we're, we're, we're in good shape when it comes to facilities, from what I can tell from the, from the mechanical side of it. So, just, just a recognition, thanks for your, for your, your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Fidler? Uh, I also just wanted to really quickly say, first of all, thanks to everybody who hung in there in the audience. And, uh, I wanted to wish the Spanish exchange students, uh, good luck. Uh, I guess I'm both ways coming over and, and going there, so, uh, I hope that they have a great experience.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. And thank you, Mr. Morgan. Other board members who wish to be heard? Uh, just one quick announcement. The board will be meeting an executive session on Monday with the BCIU, uh, which is assisting us in our search for a new superintendent to establish procedures for the superintendent's search. If there are no objections, uh, the meeting will be adjourned. Any objections? Meeting adjourned.